Hello. Called for the regular scheduled meeting of the school board. Sorry. First item on the agenda is the approval of the school board meeting. It's September 13th.
One thing we want to add, if there's anything first.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll second. On the last page, other community, the second book, above where my name is there. It says, "The lot of shop people get no list of money, but rec department covers that." It's the Linwood Friends of Recreation that covers that. And I probably said the rec department, but I don't know because I think that we're donating our tax dollars. It's the Linwood Friends of Recreation that covers that. That's the only change I have.
Any other limits? And with that change, are there any others saying that?
Aye.
All right. Those, extensions? Next item is correspondence.
Only in your faculty, professor, and CS, professional services, there is the information from services and corporate sector.
And that is administrators.
There's payroll, payroll week, the manifesto here, and there's a lot of things on the agenda later.
Okay. Again, because of course.
Yes, and the, what I did in the memo was I did explain we were having all trains, just in case you're not able to go through. Look at all the tripwire stuff.
Can I ask that those webinars available to review after the fact, do they have them?
Yes.
There's a couple of them I'd like to go through there.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, I'll give a whole share on it. Okay, thank you.
And actually, the one that was obviously no one will go to this January 11th. But that one was, so that will be decided.
Good.
Anytime you're interested in a webinar, just the chair and phone just up. The one I just wanted to mention was that the main valve failed in the fire suppression system at the elementary school. And that caused the dry valve compressor to be replaced. It was a life safety issue. So immediate action was taken when Mark Hood took care of that. It occurred on December 25th. Merry Christmas. Cost was $11,760. I've locked up any more details.
Was that in the live that went on that took you? Well, thank you for giving us your Christmas tip. Oh, gotcha. Yeah. Thank you.
Just a reminder that your board meetings of February will be September 8th and February 15th. You notice they want right after the public, only because we're trying to study the hearing. Or the 15th, they're gonna have.
Right.
So we're gonna do a budget hearing on the 15th, so you'll have a board meeting. The rest of you go with the agenda.
Okay.
Thanks, Rodney. I just want to recognize also the discovery of this now. Coming in, getting into the back. We're just going to do a positive job. The elementary, starting period, we do a little assessment now. Samples, and this is the word that would stand for elementary services. It's just that. Every high school is planning a, like, school, high school, like, lots of these. It's a good opportunity for us to give kind of a key to social missions and things like that. I have a change speech. Some, some calls that. Like, that started, so we thought we were able to do. Only that we were able to, and we used to, it's grant money. Yep, so the grant money, so we were able to start that. Congratulations. And I think we started, some of you have kids in there who started, uh, the law from the understanding. Mary, who is a student teacher, and she'll be working with Heather Kerr, this semester. She just started this week. Last year she came in and she worked with a group of people from PSU. Her writing projects, and she liked to see how she had to come in. We're excited about her. So well, and then also, so, so to speak, she is.
Congratulations. Yeah.
Our, our. So we started to basically use our week private to. Six.
I thought it was on there, just didn't say where it was. He said it was in the.
And also, so the two teachers. We want them. So we get a couple of weeks down.
Excellent.
Next up is.
It's very good to see you. So just so. Take a look at it, and then what, what we were doing in the next couple of weeks is setting up a meeting with the work team. And then we'll go over it.
Yeah.
That's how much.
So just to see if there's anything in here that you want to discuss.
And then these go back.
Meeting minutes for your budget board session.
And also definitely.
We did.
Wrapping up the annual review.
We did, we did. We've, we're pretty relaxed, actually, on the policies we have to go through to send to first reading, next reading. So after that, we're done, other than a straight one here or there that we might have. And for second reading, I am going to, Judy's suggestion is the GBEE improvement of relative. I think there's questions about that one. I'm just gonna not approve it. It's not currently a policy, it's an optional policy, and you, you know, like you said, considering it's such a small town, and. That's the amazing staff that we have, it's, I don't want to deter, so we don't want to deter, so I'm gonna recommend that people just not approve it and not have that policy. It's a GBEE. Yeah. Did you have anything else you wanted to ask for second reading?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
JR, personal record position.
Yes, personal record.
GBJR.
GBJR, okay, so GBJR, I think is. Page two of that. The issue that I saw was a copy that we got in the school board packet. Page two of it, paragraph number two, they didn't have it.
Yes, I found that already, and I fixed it on your.
Okay.
Yes.
Of course you did. Then. GBK.
Yep, it does, yeah.
Just in the section that says. Concern or complaints defined as an alleged material violation of board policy, which is a violation of board policy.
Yeah.
This is just a tutorial.
Yeah.
GCK, assignment with instructional staff. I guess I don't recall with the board having to approve, like, staffs in house schools, like, a third grader teacher is not teaching second grade. I don't remember needing, the board needing approval to approve that. But this one seems to make it, or. Based on just us alone.
Approval of the board following the recommendation of superintendent.
And I just, I don't think that's necessary.
Is that an optional? Also, yeah, that would be an option. Many catch.
You know, the one that I had was on the family, so family company.
Yeah, so GCK, we're not gonna approve that one as well. Does everyone else agree with that? Do you have any reading? Do you think you have it, okay?
That's it.
I think anyone else is.
So I packed up. I have the information before meeting. The top sheet is the agreement that we, so it's a two-year agreement. This, the salary increases to two years essentially.
Okay. Everybody can see it.
So who's that? The only other monetary thing would be the tuition reimbursement.
Oh, right.
We have to put into the budget thirty thousand versus what we had twenty-five thousand. So basically monetary pieces on the back page are other items. We've been given the church. We've reviewed.
Yeah. That didn't hurt. It was a good process. It really was. It was a lot of back and forth. A lot of collaboration on similar things too. Yeah. But I think it was a great process. It was a good project. And I know it's, it's a big jump on the warrant. It's going to be the first year maybe three thousand four hundred thirteen dollars. On the second year, one hundred ten thousand two hundred ninety-eight dollars, which is historically a huge jump. However, every town and city and school receives the same jump as far as salaries. Since then, three thousand three hundred seventy in wages. I think we did well. The contract we did is not as. Negative, but it's not as hard to hit us some other districts and schools are raising our staff. They're doing a great job negotiating and also realizing the times and being fair.
The starting salary.
Right? Yeah, that's a good point. We were fairly, we were real low, so we weren't getting. The applicants will need to set positions. So we raised the starting salary. And it's not, we're not at the top of the heap. We're not at the bottom anymore with this. We're still in the middle. So it's a competitive wage opportunity for the staff. Yeah, it was a great process. So if you just need a piece of check. I'm saying we should be a meat on.
We don't have. We don't have the contract signed yet because now it has to go to the.
Now it goes.
More, once it's through there, then it's.
Then it gets signed. Okay.
You'll have to speak up a little more just to people who are listening.
Oh, sure. Yes. Sorry. Usually people don't tell me to get louder.
So next up on the agenda is the warrant.
But yeah. So if you're in your packet, the next pieces of information is the full budget. I mean, you all lines the budget again. Followed by the warrant articles. And I guess at this point, you guys just need to do a flow. The warrant articles as they stand today is, we go through each one. There is like the article for the middle high school HVAC system is still received. We're still working on the wording of that because there's just so many pieces as we mentioned last week. We didn't go through that. You know, some of them you can, we don't know exactly on that one. There won't be a volunteering on that and that should be finalized by then.
Okay.
But then we go through each one and we just have to take them.
I missed the last meeting. I apologize. The budget, we approved the budget. And so we did. Prior to.
That's on the budget.
Yeah. Yeah, because last session, work session, it's just a work session. So you've got to go through the articles as they stand today and approve them so you can move forward. And then you can have the budget here and then all that. So normally at this point, we will approve whatever articles we have.
So I asked on article two, who's up on slipper? Who's up for slipper? Brian Jetha. I'm glad I asked. When is the? The Danbury First Amendment. It's the first.
So we want to go through one by one these articles.
Yeah. Yeah. So article four is, is the bond. It's not middle high school HVAC. So you see article four here, and you also see this an option two at the back. Yeah. Because there's so many pieces to this article. So we have the project that we're doing, which is one point three million dollars. We have part of it funded from the S of funds. We have part of it funded from retained fund balance, one hundred fifty thousand. We have part of it we're going to take from trust fund. And then we have part of it that we're going to use money that we would normally spend on other facilities projects. One hundred and fifty thousand or something.
Sorry, I will thank you.
Yeah. So working with the attorney, have to work with bond council, have to work with department of revenue to get the wording. So we just, right now, we have put option one in here, but it could be option two. Because we're not sure if we have to recognize all of the money, so that the S of lines and three R's. That's really the biggest piece. I did get to use some of the bond bank. You know, we will put it out.
Sure.
For other banks, just to give us some figures. The bond bank increments are like five thousand dollar increments. So we are talking about four hundred and twenty-five thousand or whatever. We, but we can just have an estimate here.
What is their interest rate right now?
They just had a bond sale yesterday, so I have not seen that. I do have some rates in here that they just gave me in July. They put in four point seven five percent for five year and five percent for ten year. Very conservative. In July, the bond sale was two point three six percent for five year and two point six four percent for ten year. So but you'll see we gave us the tax rate. Okay, we'll roll that down.
So we just have to.
Yeah. I know that the wording is probably going to change. I'm wanting to identify all of the funding sources in here. The real pieces on the tax rate are going to be the bond itself and one hundred fifty thousand dollars that we're going to normally funding for facilities. If we take fund balances, not going to affect the tax rate and what we take out of the trust fund. Trying to recognize all the pieces, but the correct way.
So you want to.
Yeah. You will when you have the bond hearing at the end of the month. Just try and schedule it for the next meeting. You will have, hopefully you'll have the article by then because you will take some type of a role again at the bond here.
I guess we'll.
We could go to option two, which is on the back page. Because again, option two just kind of backs up. Option one shows the S of funds and the option two takes that out because they've already, we already have that money. Right, it's different.
We don't have to have this finalized so it'll be budget caring, correct? So if this is going to change.
Yeah, yes.
We'd both change it immediately. Probably prior to the budget.
And the bond hearing is really, again, is a step in the process. Yes, we want to move forward with this project. Yes, we want to bond it or finance it somehow. Yeah, and the final, final, what's presented.
We could do that immediately for seating now. We need to just.
Just. Highlighting some figures. But so the budget. Looking at the budget, if you look at the first two pages of the detail market. We're looking at, we talked about your general fund increase or your operating budget increase is one point three percent. But if this warrant article includes your operating budget and any of your other funds inside the warrant articles. So it includes food service, it includes grants, but those offset by revenues. But we have to appropriate everything. So even though your general fund budget is eight million two thirty-eight. You have to, in this warrant article, goes appropriate everything including grants and eight. So that figure in that article is eight million eight twenty-three. Explain this article that really representing a one point three percent increase in the operating.
Yeah.
Do you know why that number is different?
That was, that was a question that came up last year. I'll make sure that I. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Article seven, we already approved the.
Well, you approved the agreement. So that's step one. A warrant article, so the warrant articles, you have to recognize it's a two-year agreement.
Yep.
But we're only raising the money for the first year. Next year, we have the budget time. That's second year, but we have to notice the public.
Make a motion to approve article seven.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Close. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. This is the sixty thousand dollars. Get back from state.
Right. So really will last into surplus. Again, it's, it's a reimbursement of expenses from this year. We'll receive it as revenue next year.
Right.
The only way to get money back into a trust fund is via a warrant. It's going to come in as a revenue and go into the trust fund.
I'll make a motion to approve article nine.
Thank you, Brian. People signify by saying aye. Close. So then this is facilities. Sixty thousand dollars to get it all the way back. So this. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Article eleven is. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve article twelve.
Yeah, the last article again, we discussed this. I don't know if.
Oh, right.
We want to have that as an article this year. So right now, we can retain, we adopted the retain fund balance article back in two thousand thirteen when it first came out. We moved that law. The law has since changed in two thousand twenty, which allows districts to retain up to five percent. And also the way to access the money is differently. It's going to be an emergency. Now you just have to hold a public's hearing. That money, and then in your annual report, you have to let the public know.
And you don't have to get a public hearing.
No, once the money is there, no.
And is this a yearly?
It's a yearly thing if you don't use.
If you don't use it, it goes back every year.
And it does not accumulate.
Just like the last one, okay.
Yeah. It operates the same way as far as that goes.
Make a motion that we make that article thirteen and approve it.
I think that just gives a little bit of flexibility. As far as the major difference between what we're doing now and what we could be doing is. It's a little bit more like, can be retained.
It seems like a no brainer.
Yeah.
I was wondering what downside do you think it really is.
No, I mean, it, it would only be used if it had been an emergency, which is a public hearing for it. Any, any of this left over record, it goes back. So it's essentially the same thing. It just adds a little bit of flexibility.
This is just updating it to go with a lot of change. It's still those very specifics. You know, how and what to use it on. You can't just spend it, it has to be an emergency. Like the same criteria, but instead it, you access it differently. You don't have to go through the RA and all that. Right, you just have a public hearing.
I mean, like, again, if we attach that higher amount, we could have put more towards this project. Funny, again, if we didn't have that and we don't maintain it, it goes back to the tax.
Is that something that's.
No, once adopted, it's quite adapted until I said it. Yeah, unless somebody wants to be said.
How many years have we been doing it?
Since two thousand fifteen.
How many times have we accessed it?
Just the first time. And the only other thing I put in your packet for your reference when you go through all the budget is I put the tax. So the operating budget, general fund that we put in the article number, warrant article number six. That, you can see the tax rate impact of that. So it's really the change in the operating budget from one year to the next process, like the debt change. All the numbers below that, that grants and everything, they're offset by revenues. So it doesn't have an impact on the tax rate. But anyway, so you can see the breakdown for Lincoln and Woodstock, the impact on each town. Let's reportion that change. Six cents per thousand, Woodstock's thirty cents per thousand. Go to the next page, I just have a separate warrant articles. So LWBA agreement, which is warrant article seven, one hundred eighty-three thousand dollar warrant article. You can see that impact on each town. Lincoln, it's almost ten cents per thousand and Woodstock is twenty-two cents per thousand. I tried to figure out the pieces for the middle high school HVAC, which is now article four. It's all going to be a one if I was originally going to be two when I did this up. So you, what's really going to affect the tax rate on that is the one hundred fifty thousand that we would normally fund for facilities projects. That's going to go right to the bonus for taxation. So that'd be about eight cents for Lincoln, eighteen cents for Woodstock. And then. For the bond warrant article. We introduced the warrant rate due to five year and a ten year projection for us and the impact of each town. The tax rate impact reach down. So in Lincoln for a five year, it's five cents per thousand for that project. Forty-one, approximately four hundred thirty thousand. Woodstock is twelve cents. Or if you do a ten year, it could be three cents and eight cents. And then I also put down the interest over the life of the bond that we do a five year, ten year. So, you know, another order. Thank you for that. But that's just. There's clearly a contact with service for us, but we don't need to discuss that.
Thank you, Deb.
Your S of funds, the S or loser fund plan, this is going to two thousand.
We have completion of the H B S C project that goes through. That will. We'll talk about the bond here and set up the budget.
The bond hearing.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
So Sally Nickel would like to let the board know that we support the U N A's cooperative extension. Has been working with her class for fifth graders on Thursdays. They've been learning about nutrition. And kids have been trying different foods that incorporate five food groups. Their excellent. Paula Good, sorry, Paula King would like, everybody knows, first day of elementary activities. She's going very well. And that she called in a favor and asked for some snow. Got some. It really went well and everybody had a great time and they kept chatting. And I would just say, Ed, that staff. We had the attorney this week, he's done a lot of support.
Can I ask Paula to work on more stuff for this, right?
Yeah, I'll try. I guess I can help you right now.
She's good.
I got, I got to be a part of the ski program for the first time. They would just. Appreciate. Mayhem, I would say. And so. Before I, we open up to the community, just wanted to remind. Three members present that part of the board's policy regarding public comment. Consistent with our C one eight seventy-four and in the interest of protecting personnel that have filed information as well as other confidential information comments, including complaints regarding individual students, volunteers, employees, other than the superintendent should be directed to the superintendent or otherwise, as provided under the blank grievance resolution process set forth in school board policies, K E, K E P. The school will relax at any comments following that category. It's not, it's not the appropriate thing. So we'll open up the public comment.
My name's Paul Sherwan, I have three children at the school. And I just have a few statements to make here. First is that New Hampshire is an at-will state. There is no reason need be given for termination of an employee. The DOE has a website that has a list of revoked education educator credentials. And there's, there's about a dozen this year. And there's twenty-eight pages, so there's about a hundred and fifty of these educators who have the license revoked for misconduct with children. Some of those being sexual, some of the misappropriate, misappropriate conduct and not respecting boundaries. Now I'm reading from the Code of Ethics for New Hampshire Educators, again from the DOE website. And education should consider the ramification of possible perceptions of entering into an adult relationship of any kind with a student. Further communicates, further considers and recognizes potential ramifications of having personal relationships with colleagues, staff, students, and other members of the school community. And also considers ramifications in public perception of using social media. Now I'm reading from the Code of Conduct for New Hampshire Educators. Unprofessional conduct shall include possessing alcohol on school premises, falsifying deliberately, misrepresenting information submitted to the department in the course of an investigation. Should also include any sexual act with or any student. Or soliciting or encouraging participation in a romantic sexual relationship, whether written, verbal, or physical. And engaging in any activities via electronic media. And inappropriate communications, including covert, things covert in nature, like notes, for example. Now I'm reading from title nine. So when responding to sexual harassment. Students and employees clearly understand how a school must respond to sexual harassment, including a way that supports, again, supports the alleged victims. Now, from what I understand, the school did a phone call example, the telephone game when you do, you know, describing how a rumor spreads. And I would say this does not support a victim. When you're. Doing that sort of example. In fact, I said that's exactly the opposite. And because it's not a rumor, because on December twenty-sixth, a case was opened. And.
At this point.
Yeah. Sure. Oh, oh, that's fine. I won't, I won't go into that. So anyways. These boundaries are not being adhered to. Again, the DOE website has about a hundred and fifty people, over a dozen this year, who are perpetrators. And this is probably only a tip of the iceberg. And one thing that they all did have in common is that the teachers' union supported each one of these people. And the children don't have a union. And the children don't have a union. The only thing they have is the board. And so the board is responsible for their safety. And when you go back into your non-public session, I hope you take this in consideration. So.
So you go for the public, I will set the motion to adjourn the public portion next meeting. Yeah, sorry. We'll vote that R C ninety-one.
Yes, yes, yes.
We won't have any voting after. Won't be any votes. You don't need to stick around.